Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this last Board of Supervisors meeting, I can't believe I'm saying that already, but of 2023. Glad to see you here this morning. We're going to open today with a pledge of allegiance led by Vice Chair McCary, and then we'll, if you'll remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards.
Please join me in standing our flag, ready to salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and the next item is we will go right to our Board of Supervisors matters, and I'm going to go down to the, to the end of the dais over here and, and just to say, you know, thanks to Supervisor Vanderpool for, you know, for this, putting up with the state mandates on, you know, solar energy and like, because that, that suit is powered by, by the sun, right?
It's powered by the Christmas spirit.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as you can see in, in our household, we, we believe in the Christmas spirit and the holiday spirit, so we're very, very excited for everything coming up, but that's what you get when you have three kids under the age of 10. So a few things I wanted to go over this morning. In Tulare, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, everything continues on. We have another coffee shop opening up in downtown Tulare. It's called Valley Coffee. It's at 241 East Kern. They will have their ribbon cutting next week. It's a wonderful facility, and they've done a great job with that location. They've been based out of a truck for a long time, so now they have a brick and mortar shop, and it's welcome in downtown. I was at a Governmental Affairs Committee meeting yesterday, and the downtown director, John Harmon, just said, you know, "We've never had coffee shops in downtown Tulare." There's a comment he made a few years back. Now there's four, so there, there's plenty of coffee shops and places for people to choose from. So it's a, it's a great thing, and we've had a lot of development and growth in downtown Tulare, and I just opened up a golf facility down there last week before the Christmas parade. So just a lot of really exciting things happening in downtown Tulare, and it's great. Today I have a VIEW Board meeting, the Valley Innovative, Innovative Energy Watch Board, and that is taking place in Fresno. They represent the entire valley, and I serve on that Board of Directors. I have a Tsera meeting tomorrow, and I'm sure about it this time. Last week I wasn't so sure. Tomorrow I do have that Tsera meeting, that's at 8:30. The TCAG department has their holiday luncheon on tomorrow as well. Then tomorrow afternoon slash evening, I have an International Agro Center Board meeting, followed by a holiday reception. And then I meet with our HHSA Director this week, and I look forward to that. There's always a lot going on. And then later on that morning, I have a First Five Commission meeting. That's our last First Five Commission meeting of the year, and that's always a great event, and we always have one of our providers give a presentation. And we're very fortunate to have such dedicated people providing services for those under age five in our county. Then that evening, Tulare Chamber of Commerce has their Business After Hours Holiday Event. And then lastly, an event I wanted to highlight that's coming up. I appreciate all the county departments that are participating and helping leadership Tulare out, but Leadership Tulare has their County Day on December 21st, right before the holidays, and that has a, a great group of participants, and I really do appreciate them wanting to learn more about the county, about getting involved and making an impact in Tulare. So that's, the, those are the upcoming meetings I wanted to highlight, and meetings and events, and I wish everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season for both you and your families. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
And not to be outdone, we'll go to Supervisor Sheckley and her elf outfit this morning.
Yes, I'm covering my ears. I don't want to, you see what they really look like, they're pointed. We need to get you some matching socks next year. You guys can't see them, but they're all right.
They're colorful.
Yes, so as everybody has said or will say, it's been a very eventful few weeks. First off, I want to congratulate Central Valley Christian High School on winning their state championship in football. I know we had three teams go to the state championships within Tulare County, so I think that's pretty awesome, so congratulations to them. Last Thursday, I attended the ribbon cutting for the lofts at Fort Visalia, the new incredible affordable housing development that is in downtown Visalia. If you haven't had a chance to even drive by and look, they're beautiful, but inside is housed the Heritage Room, which shows about Visalia and the history of Visalia. This is actually on the site where the first fort was built. It didn't last long, it wasn't needed, but at least they had the protection. But I, I appreciate them paying homage to that. Also, it will be housing the Arts Consortium, so if you haven't had a chance again, please go by and check that out. Also, on Friday night, I attended the opening of the Winter Wonderland, the Sheriff's Department Youth Services, again, did the walk-through inflatable light show at Mooney Grove, and that was well-attended. I haven't talked to anybody about the numbers, but I'm sure for that free event, there were a lot of folks there. Also, on Saturday morning, I attended the Los Madrinas Guild, which is the local guild that raises funds for Valley Children's Hospital. Their luncheon, and then that night, I attended the Deputy Sheriff's Association Holiday Dinner and Installation of New Officers and Awards, and congratulations to all of them. And I just so happened to win another gun this year. Sorry, guys, I did, yeah, I did.
And one I was trying to win, too.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Chair, you know, whatever. Coming up, a lot of different things, Animal Services Advisory Committee meeting. Also, on Friday, I'll be attending the 100th Birthday for Mike Kalustian. The 21st, I have an Airborne Meeting, and I also want to congratulate, I know it's the city of Tulare, but Janice Avalo will be retiring from the city of Tulare, so I want to congratulate her. And lastly, I want to congratulate our own Chief Vernon, because she is now President of the California Probation Officers Association. So congratulations, Chief, that's all I have. And again, happy holidays to everyone. We're right now in the Hanukkah season, and happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you, Supervisor Sheckley, and we'll go to Supervisor Valero.
All right, well, good morning Tulare County. So I attended a very successful ribbon cutting for Employment Connection in Dinuba, housed inside the nice Proteus Building. This way, all the great services offered through Employment Connection in Visalia can be replicated in Dinuba for people of the North County. Although they've been there for some time, this event served as a rebrand, new logo placement on the building, and gathering of partners to celebrate this tremendous work. I attended the Association of Villagers Installation of Officers with colleagues Sheckley and McCary. Dinuba's KC Park received a major upgrade with basketball and pickleball courts last week. The city held a ribbon cutting for those, two new additions, but also did a groundbreaking for a future nature trail and butterfly garden. Looking forward to using this trail soon. And then later on that Thursday evening, I too attended the ribbon cutting for the lofts at Fort Visalia, and as Supervisor Sheckley said, yes, a beautiful event with a beautiful space. On Saturday morning, I spoke to the 6th and 8th Grade Student Leadership Group at Kings River Elementary. Always great to connect with our youth who have lots to say about their community. I also led them through a SWAC analysis of their own communities. I then participated in the London Community Parade that afternoon, and then the Woodlake Parade that evening. So thank you Fire Chief Norman for participating in that as well, and always having Engine One available for us. I attended a great TCAG meeting yesterday, and during the Walk and Roll Contest, District 4 received the most student contest winners, but congratulations to all students who participated and those who received bikes yesterday afternoon. Yesterday evening, I also attended the College of Sequoia's Board Meeting to congratulate, congratulate Raymond Macarena for being elected by his peers to serve as the next President of the COS Governing Board. Tomorrow, I will be participating in the Inflation Reduction Act Summit, to be held right here in Visalia with about 65 participants coming from all over the Central Valley. I will also be participating in a call with NACO, with a conversation on youth violence and mental health, and then a check-in with HHSA leadership as well. And then on Thursday, I will be attending the Pastries and Papers at Brick and Stone in Dinuba, our monthly Antelope Valley Meeting with the City of Woodlake, along with federal and state partners. Thereafter, I have a seniors' meeting with the community of Ivanhoe, and then a toy distribution in Delph Colony for the students in that area. On Friday, I will be in a meeting with Laura Firestorm and the county team to continue meeting on the East Arosi Water and Sewer Situation in hopes of getting closer to our goals. And then on Saturday, I will be attending the Family Services of Tulare County Pancake Breakfast at Peter Malik Park, in addition to helping with toy drive, a toy drive in Woodlake that afternoon. So I know there are other events and programs happening between then and our next meeting in January, but I can share those then. And so again, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, as colleagues have shared. Merry Christmas and a great start to the new year 2024, and that is all I have, Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Valero, and we'll next we go to Vice Chair McCary.
Well, good morning, everyone. It has been extremely, extremely busy. I want to start off, first of all, by wishing my wife a happy birthday. Today's her birthday. And yesterday was Annabelle Enlow turned 100 years old. She was one of our centenary recipients, but yesterday was her actual birthday, so I got to wish her a happy birthday, and she was very happy and in high spirits, so it was great. Congratulations to the Strathmore Spartans Football Team. They also won the state championship in their division, and there'll be celebratory events coming up, and I look forward to attending those and, and congratulating them, that that team has been an excellent team over the years. They work very hard. This last week, man, many, many events. We attended Chief Norman's birthday. We, Paper and Pastries, the Exeter Sun puts on this little gathering. This one was at Component Coffee. A lot of the community was there, and it's their way of outreach and working with the community, and they invited me to attend that, and it was very well-attended. And they're taking it all over the county, so if you have an opportunity to attend a Paper and Pastries, you, I highly recommend it, that it's very well, it's a good way to network with them. Attended the Association of Riddlers Installation of Officers this week, Laughco Meeting, Proteus Open House. It was great to see, you know, they were highlighting some things that they had done and talked to everybody there. They had a great open house from all of their different offices came there. The Lofts at Fort Visalia has been discussed. I met with the Farmersville Kiwanis. Library Appreciation Meeting was early Friday morning, and there was a little meeting, they had a training to show appreciation for the staff there at the library. I stopped by to visit it with them, and it was a great time visiting them. After that, I came straight here to the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, went to Mid Valley Disposal Luncheon after that Friday. Friday evening was a Lindsay Christmas Parade. I was, want to thank Chief Norman for bringing Engine One to that, and I was able, also one of the judges at that event, so that worked out very well. Saturday was Los Madrinas Guild Lunch, and then the Deputy Sheriff's Christmas Party that evening. The one thing that we attended, and it's very sorrow, was the services for one of our firemen, and Chris Ellerman. So again, our condolences, it was a beautiful event, very well-attended. It shows what kind of a person that Chris actually was. And on a different topic I'd just like to bring up, you know, it's that time of year, I attended services of a acquaintance, someone I knew for a long time, and they were actually the victim of suicide. It's that time of the year, people are looking, people feel despair, and I want everyone to understand, and if anyone's listening out there, that you are loved and there is hope. You just have to turn and look for help. The person that, that I attended for was a very happy-go-lucky person that you, you thought had been the absolute last one that would have ever even considered anything like that. So if you need help out there, or if you know of anyone that does, please, you can call 988 Suicide Hotline, they can get you in contact with Tulare County. But let's just pay attention, and there's little subtle things that we miss that when it happens, we look back and go, oh, I should have caught it. So I want everyone to have a very, very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and safe holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair McCary. Last week, I attended our Rural County Representatives of California Board Meeting in Sacramento. Kind of the highlights, I'm the, the Chairman of the Water Natural Resources Committee at that agency, and there was a, an abundance of conversation around water at that meeting. So all 40 counties that are, that are involved in RCRC are very interested in that. We also, who also attended was Nancy Ward, and she is the Governor's Office of Emergency Services Director and, and also the Consultant for Homeland Security to the, to the Governor, and kind of going around the room after her presentation, talking about how much each county had been impacted over the last year, and kudos to that particular, to that particular division for what they took care of during our, our emergencies in this. That was a really good meeting in Sacramento. And then also last week, as has been mentioned, the Tulare County Deputy Sheriff's Association Christmas Party, and congratulations to their honorees, and thanks to all of the law enforcement officers out there, standing, standing up for us on a daily basis. On Sunday, had the pleasure of riding in the River Island Country Club and the River Island East Golf Cart Parade, Annual Golf Cart Parade, and right, right there behind Santa and Mrs. Santa and their golf carts. And so, and I had a, there was a friend that decorated up a cart and chauffeured us around, and we had a great time, and yelled Merry Christmas so often and sang so many Christmas carols. I just about lost my voice by the, by the end of the evening, but that's always a, a great event that they have. Yesterday, as has been mentioned, we attended the Medal of Valor Presentation at the Sheriff's Department, and, and want to just give our gratitude again to those four honorees, and again, all law enforcement officers and firefighters that are out there, standing in the gap for us every single day, putting their lives on the line for us every single day, and that was really highlighted. And I know my wife and I pray every day for our firefighters, for our law enforcement, and all those that are in the military, basically everyone that puts themselves in harm's way for us, that we owe them a great debt of gratitude. Yesterday, again, it's been mentioned, Tulare County Association of Governments, Tulare County Transit Authority, and we had the Walk and Roll Presentations yesterday with the, with the kids for their artwork and giving out bikes, and that was a really good time. Later this week, I'll be having some meetings regarding our, our well ordinance outside of the, the basin that was established under, under Sigma. There's some little, I think some glitches that need to be ironed out there with wells that are put in outside of that basin. Also, continuing on that theme of water, we're going to have some, some discussions regarding our Groundwater Sustainability Agency this week, and in particular, our Groundwater Sustainability Plan that is still going back and forth with the state. And then we'll get into all of the Christmas parties. There's a whole bunch of them coming up, and, and this week, our Rotary Club, and, and then my, my business, Centerline Design and Engineering, will also be having our Christmas party this week. We'll be having a Sierra View Medical Center Foundation Meeting, last one of the year, this week, discussing fundraising for the hospital. And then next week, again, on the theme of hospitals, trying to set up a meeting with the CEO of Adventist Health to get to know what they're doing in the area, along with several constituent meetings, since we're not going to have a Board Meeting next week, that opens up the week pretty wide open, so I have a lot of meetings lined up. And beyond that, I just wanted to also give congratulations to Chief Vernon here for the, for becoming the President of her association. And even though not in my district, I still want to give congratulations to the Strathmore Spartans Football Team on the second state championship, so that's a great accomplishment. And then just Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. We'll be seeing you next year, but be sure to have that great time with family and friends over the next couple of weeks. All right, and with that, I see some beards in the room, and so we're going to be talking about that. Come on up, Lupe, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Townsend, Vice Chair McCary, Board of Members, CAO and Council. My name is Lupe Garza, Human Resources Director. So we started this No Shave November, or Movember Challenge as a way to raise awareness to men's health. It's a fun activity that has brought great conversations and great participation. According to the Movember Foundation, men's health is in crisis. Men are dying on average of 4.5 years earlier than women and for largely preventable, preventable reasons. That's down from six years ago, six years, yes, last year, so that's increased significantly. A growing number of men, around 10.8 million globally, are facing life with prostate cancer diagnosis, prostate cancer diagnosis. Globally, testicular cancer is the most common cancer among young men. And across the world, one man dies by suicide every minute of every day, with males accounting for 69% of all suicides. Our workforce is no exception. Health insurance claims indicate that in 2023, we have 2% of our males have been diagnosed with either prostate cancer, colorectal cancer, skin cancer, kidney disease, stress and anxiety and depression, heart failure, and also in mental health. So what can we do? Start by talking, asking, listening, and encouraging to take action. Many of these diseases are preventable, and by knowing the facts, county employees and dependents can help by prevention and early detection. So I'm going to turn this over now to Markell Palmer, who is a Human Resources Supervisor over Benefits, to go over the participants and announce the winners of this year's challenge.
Morning.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to present the participants of this year's challenge and announce the winners. Participants that are present this morning, we do ask that you come forward as your name is called. We have Alex Mendenhall from Ag Commissioner's Office, Andrew Boring from Law Library, Andrew Pacheco from RMA, Angel Cuzada from TCICT, Brian Coleman from HHSA, Cass Cook from the Auditor's Office, Chief Norman from FIRE, David Saliam from TCICT, Dwayne Cornet from the Sheriff's Office, Fabian Rodriguez from HHSA, Frank Marturana from HHSA, George Galloway, TCICT, James Bonifay from Child Support, Jimmy Ibarra from RMA, Joaquin Rodriguez Ortega from Sheriff's Department, John Blair from TCICT, Lance Kaiser from Tax Collector, Michael Gardner from RMA, Michael O'Neill from Sheriff's Department, Myron Bowler from the Sheriff's Department, Patrick Grover from RMA, Salvador Lemus Jr. from Child Support, Stephen Vega, HHSA, Todd Bruce from the Sheriff's Department, Trevor Peet from the Sheriff's Department, and some additional participants. We have HHSA Fiscal and Patricia Padilla from RMA. All right, so that's a lot of participants we had this year. Before we announce the first and second place winners, the Voting Committee did want to implement a third category for honorable mentions. Chief Norman and Cass Cook. And then for our first and second place winners, I'm going to invite the Chair to assist in presenting the gift baskets. All right, second place winner this year is James Bonifay. And the first place winner of the 2023 Movember Challenge is Captain Dwayne Cornet from the Sheriff's Department. We thank you all for your participation this year.
Mr. Chair, real quick, if I just could, I, I just want to thank all of our Movember participants. You know, I, I think Lupe did a good job, you know, talking about what this is all about. I do hope that it did the same for you as it did for me, and that was start conversations about men's health and encouraging the men that you know or the folks that were asking questions to go and have a proactive health screening or to follow up on their health. Like Lupe said, so much can be prevented, and it's really just about spreading awareness. So thank you to everyone who participated. I did too, and now that my colleagues aren't on the committee to judge, and a situation I could never win, I may actually take a picture and submit, submit the results, because I think I did quite well this year, but that, that'll come maybe next year.
Pretty sure yours was fake, yeah. Pretty sure that was fake beard.
We'll publish, we'll put this in the, in the grapevine, so you'll have another opportunity. I too let my hair grow out, and so I just didn't want to show it on the picture, so that... So I'll put that on the grapevine.
Any other supervisors like to say anything? Said it all, yeah. Thanks, thanks to all the participants, there was a great group this year. It's always really super hard to judge that, because everybody has quite the transformation, but thanks for bringing awareness, we really appreciate it. And thank you Lupe and staff for putting it all together, thank you. All right, so next we will go to our public comments. This is a time when members of the public can comment on any item not appearing on the agenda, and do we have any comment cards?
We do have a public comment card. Leanne Williams.
Okay. Good morning. I think she'll turn it on.
I, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to do this or not, but I woke up this morning and said I need to do this. I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Kelly Vernon's appointment as President of the Chief Probation Officers of California Association. It is a huge association that has a lot of impact in the state, and I think it's going to be a very good year for Tulare County and probation with her at the helm, and I just thought it was worth recognizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead Supervisor Valero.
And it's the first in Tulare County, correct? Yes, so again, yes, thank you for leading the way and for, yeah, representing Tulare County across the state. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other comment cards?
I don't have any more cards, no.
Okay, I see someone coming to the podium that might want to say something. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Townsend, Supervisors, Council, CAO and Clerk. I am Aaron Bach, I'm the Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency, and before you today is a notice of exemption. We are going to award Hector Guerra a sign. This requires an exemption, obviously. This is for 15 years of service with the county, and I'd just like to read some higher points of this exemption. This is exempt, the sign, and the giving of the sign to Hector, because he is the best. He's the best environment. He is the best environmental planner, I believe, in all of the San Joaquin Valley. We, the Resource Management Agency, give this to Hector for 15 years of service. As of this Friday, Hector will have worked continuously for Tulare County for the last 12 years. Before that, he did a stint some years ago for three years. He is retiring after a few unsuccessful attempts because we know he would just love to work here so much. This is with nearly 40 years of service in the planning field. Some of his great accomplishments include previously spending time over a decade at the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, where he wrote the same air quality rules that we live by today. He was the planner for the city of Dinuba and started his career with Fresno COG, working with Georgina Vivian on the Fresno County's transportation systems and programs. A graduate of Fresno State in history with a graduate coursework in city planning, he started from simple roots, working with his family, to become one of the best environmental planners in the San Joaquin Valley. He was a good boss, a better friend, and a great collaborator in creating and providing environmental services to all the agencies in Tulare County, day in and day out without fail. He has produced over 2,300 environmental documents, averaging over 210 a year for over a decade. In establishing one of the best county environmental planning programs in the state and keeping to the rules of SEQA, with the dedication and diligence in practicing one of the most regimented legal processes in land use entitlements, this is with, is rife with challenges, and he has successfully mitigated these challenges time and time again, as a testament to his character. He will be missed, but before he comes up to address this board and this body, we requested one testimonial from one of his staff members, just so you could see what it's like to work for him.
Thanks, Aaron. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Chair Townsend, Supervisors, CAO, County Counsel. My name is Russell Akashua, and I work for the Tulare County RMA. I've been working with the county for about six and a half years, and for five and a half years, I've been working under Hector's leadership. When I first started with the county, one of my interview questions was, do you know anything about SEQA? And I said, no, what is that? And so that's kind of where my beginnings was. And since then, under Hector's leadership, I was able to, you know, basically learn the ins and outs of SEQA. I've been helped developing and writing like quasi initial studies, helping with M&amp;Ds, doing tribal councils, consults, and other elements. Also, through Hector's flexibility, I was able to go back to Fresno State and get my bachelor's degree in regional and city planning. So it was all thanks to Hector not only helping me develop in the county, but also get my education as well. So yes, I mean, I'm gonna very much miss Hector. It was great working under him, and he had some of the best stories to tell. I still think that there's one left, something about zombie babies, and so he says that he was gonna tell me that one on his way out, so he's got three more days to let me know about that story. But yes, thank you very much, Hector, for everything.
Thank you. Well, good morning.
This is unexpected, but, no, thank you. I know the position was created many years ago because one of our former directors was looking for something that will help economic development and other planning projects go forward, especially the public benefit type projects. And I was selected, and I have extensive SEQA experience. The evolution of SEQA has been complex. My first tour of duty with Tulare County actually wrote an EIR, included a response to comments that was only 21 pages long. Can't even do that with the executive summary nowadays. But I've had great leadership, great boards to work with. I did work for the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District for a dozen years while I was the SEQA lead. So at the Air District, you get to build a lot of relationships because we have three county, I mean, excuse me, eight counties and 59 cities and all these state and federal agencies in between. So you get to know a lot of people, and that has helped in SEQA. Because when you work with, in SEQA, you work with CalTrends, you work with Calfish and Wildlife, you work with everybody else, the Air District, you know, my buds, and it comes in handy when it comes to doing environmental documents to know that kind of stuff. Not an expert at what they do, but I have a strong knowledge of what they do. Would you call me a SEQA expert? I would. I'm good at what I do, but I've had great leadership and great support, and I'm gonna miss it. You know, I'm a resident of Fresno County, but I chose to work for Tulare County. It's a beautiful place, I want to preserve it, and a lot of public benefits project, and, you know, one of the greater ones was the South County Detention Facility, which I affectionately call Socodentfact because South County Detention Facility is too long to say. So Socodentfact is a near $70 million project, and it literally allows those who are incarcerated to stay in Tulare County because about a third of those who get in trouble and get confined to a prisoner jail are from Porterville. So why is that important to me? Because, think about it, if you have a mom or dad or a brother or a son in that jail and you're able to visit them pretty regularly and not have to travel to a prison, you know, you literally can take the bus or transit or walk or take a bike or have a ride and go see them on a regular basis, and you don't get disconnected. That's big. The Watermane Civil, Water, Yetimisville Water Project, public benefit project. I just love the public benefits projects, and those are the driving force that keep me motivated to do stuff. So a lot of solar projects, Hotel in Three Rivers, just a bunch of things that I think are great for Tulare County. So with that, thank you, Board, for supporting me. Thank you, RMA, great leadership. He's the best non-attorney attorney that I know. He's my first line of defense when it comes to SEQA, so thank you, everybody. It's, I've been honored to work here.
Thank you. And I think, I think we'd like to give you a hand and maybe take a picture with you right now. Go ahead.
I just, again, just want to say thank you again, Hector, for your dedication, your passion, and fulfilling your purpose right here in the county of Tulare, and for providing a foundation for all things changing in your field. So thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will move to our item number four. We have some timed items at 9:30, which we're just a little bit past that. So before we open these public hearings, I need to have the clerk provide instructions to members of the public on the procedures for today's hearings. Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
One second, we're gonna have the, yes, our CAO.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just wanted to make sure the public comment period was closed and whether or not you would entertain the consent calendar.
You know what, you're right, we should have had, sorry, thanks for that. Yeah, were there any other public comments today? Or any other comment cards? Looks like maybe there are. CAO's gonna save me.
It's four different item.
Okay. Any other public comments for items that are not on the agenda this morning? Okay, hearing number, thank you. Hearing number, we'll go ahead and have the clerk give us our instructions for the morning.
Thank you, Chair Townsend. To the members of the public, if you wish to provide public testimony in person, please complete and submit a comment card, provide your name and agenda item, agenda item for which you will be providing testimony. There are number two, there are two public hearings listed on the agenda for today, Agenda Items Number Four and Number Five. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Your statements will go out on live audio stream and will be included in the audio recording of the meeting. The timer will be set to three minutes, so please adhere to the time limit. If you choose not to participate in person, you may also participate by submitting an email as this item is being heard. Email should include the sender's name and address for the record. Email should include either Agenda Item Number Four or Item, for Item Number Four, or Agenda Item Number Five for Item Number Five. Email should be sent to clerk of the Board's email address at clerkoftheboard@tularecounty.ca.gov. Public testimony will not be read, but will be made part of the record, if received before the close of testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes the instructions for today's public hearing.
Okay, thank you. We'll now take up Agenda Item Number Four, Public Hearing, to consider adopting General Plan Amendment Number GPA 20-006, the Tulare County Environmental Justice Element, and the public hearing is now open. And we'll start with staff's presentation and then take board questions and public testimony. Mr. Bach, please make the presentation.
Yes, Chairman Townsend, Supervisor, CAO, Counsel, and Clerk. I am Aaron Bach. I'm the Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency, and before you today is the Environmental Justice Element of the General Plan of the County of Tulare. So first question, what is environmental justice? Environmental justice is the fair treatment of people of all races, cultures, and incomes with respect to development, adoption, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws and regulations and policies. So what are the legal requirements of SB 1000, which requires an environmental justice element? The General Plan, EJ policies must reduce the unique or compounded health risks in disadvantaged communities by addressing the following: pollution, reduce pollution exposure, improve air quality, promote public facilities, promote food access, promote safe and sanitary homes, and promote physical activities. Those are directly from the legal requirements of SB 1000. So what are some of the additional requirements? Identify objectives and policies to promote civil engagement in the public decision-making process. Identify objectives and policies that prioritize improvements and programs that address the needs of disadvantaged communities. And that a city, county, or city and county subject to the subdivision, to this subdivision, shall adopt or review the environmental justice element, or the environmental justice goals, policies, and objectives and other elements upon the adoption or next revision of two or more elements concurrently on or after January 1st, 2018. So we approved SB 43 guidelines requiring improvements to VMT for SEQA under our circulation element, and we are adopting our housing element. So those would be two. Prioritizing the needs of disadvantaged communities, including community safety. So the first policy here is the prioritizing the needs of disadvantaged communities. The policy itself would read, "The county will collaborate with nonprofit organizations and community leaders within environmental justice communities to create a monitoring strategy that can measure the effectiveness of the EJ policies in place." And that includes for community safety, community sewer systems, local food markets, internet access, community resource centers, animal control, natural gas, green spaces, public transportation, education levels, and job requirements, and housing affordability. Again, those are some of the things we would look at as part of our monitoring strategy and our effectiveness in regards to the environmental justice policies in place. Civil engagement, the policy would read, "The county will strive to promote education for disadvantaged communities to get a better understanding of native plants and how to organize and implement greening projects that build community assets while revitalizing environmental habitats." So inclusiveness, education, access, transparency, and responsiveness, honor and include local community knowledge, and long-term commitments. So as far as outreach, these are just examples of how we conducted outreach throughout this whole process, that the outreach materials were eye-catching, easy to follow along, translated into Spanish, and that were interactive. So going back to our goals and inclusiveness, our goals, even before we get into the environmental justice element, as far as outreach and workshopping these ideas and concepts, we have used these policies to create the brochures and the other documentation that went, we used, and I'll show a few slides here shortly, to engage the community fully, including surveys. So again, we were very interactive. So here are some of the civil engagement photos from some of the communities we went to, to discuss environmental justice, to promote environmental adjustments, to get community members to engage using surveys and other interactive materials to get information to create the policies that I've read through. So we've gone to Allensworth, Early Mart, Ivanhoe, Poplar, Visalia, a couple of different times, Strathmore. We've also gone to Dinuba, Arosy, Pixley, Porterville, Woodville, and Rich Grove. So we've gone to quite a few communities across the entirety of the county to engage the communities in the environmental justice policy creation. One of the other considerations of environmental justice is crime prevention. So the policy would read, "The county shall promote the use of building and site design features as means for crime prevention and reduction, crime prevention through environmental design, natural surveillance, natural access control, territorial reinforcement, maintenance, and management." So those are the things I will be looking at, this policy to contribute to as we move forward. Food access, the objective would read, "To promote the development of smaller independent grocery stores that prioritize distribution of locally grown and locally processed produce to alleviate the burden of food deserts." As we've talked about through all of our community plans over the last decade, that is a consideration in Tulare County about food deserts, and the objective would be to promote the development of smaller independent grocery stores, which I think this board in this county does through rezones and other use permits. Anyway, some of the implementation measures would, looking at unified school districts, the opportunity for local food distribution, opportunities around farmers market, farmers markets, and increasing access to farmers markets through alternative currencies. So those are some of the implementations we'd be looking at to implement that objective. Promote physical activity, the policy would read, "The county shall require, where feasible, the development of parks, open space, sidewalks, walking, bicycle paths that promote physical activity and discourage automobile dependency in all future communities." That is something we do through our Complete Streets, and we've done through our community plans, but to further that idea or concept, the implementation measures will look around strategic considerations, emphasis on walkability and community resiliency, promote greening projects, look at existing opportunities to utilize physical activity, look at the schools for that same purpose, there'd be an emphasis on bike lanes, which there is definitely within our Complete Streets programs, and look at access to parks for the communities, which we pretty much do every day. But, yeah, so the policy itself reads that way, and like it says, shall require where feasible, so the development of parks, open space, sidewalks, walking, and bike paths. Promote public facilities, the policy would read, "Encourage the use of existing library services to ensure community members have access to the services they offer, including but not limited, internet connection, educational resources, and indoor cooling." As a matter of fact, there are 12 cooling centers throughout the incorporated areas of Tulare County through the use of libraries, but it also promotes the use, gives internet access, they are public libraries, obviously access to books, cultural centers, access to emergency facilities, and look at other sheriff and fire services in the promotion of access to such public facilities. So that is really in the planning of community plans, that is in the planning of roadways, that is in the, just to look at that in a general planning sense, but also to encourage the use of these library services in the future for these purposes. Reduce water pollution exposure, the goal is to, as it reads, is to protect drinking water and environmental justice communities from contamination. The policy would be, "The county will support efforts by the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board to improve water quality in environmental justice communities." The implementation measures will look at water quality or water contamination and using data from the groundwater and ambient monitoring, monitoring assessment program to implement these goals and policies. Reduce air pollution exposure, the policy reads, "The county shall examine the feasibility of employing agricultural buffers between agriculture and non-agriculture uses and along the edges of urban development boundaries and hamlet development boundaries, considering factors..." factors including type of operation of chemicals used for spraying, building orientation, planting of trees for screening, location of existing and future rights of way, roads, railroads, canals, power lines, et cetera, and unique site conditions." And of course, the implementation measures will be looking at air pollution, pollutants of concern, ozone, diesel particulate matter and pesticides. The policy regarding safe and sanitary homes is that maximize the county's attainment and use of public and private grants, low interest loans, in-kind donation and other resources to meet the need for affordable housing and suitable living environments for all residents. That includes for household overcrowding, housing affordability and the cost burden of housing. So we have been in discussions with the Attorney General through this whole process and their environmental justice group. And some of the suggestions were very similar to what you saw in the letter from Leadership Council. But we, through the last two discussions, we really felt that we had answered pretty much all their questions, and we haven't had another discussion since the planning commission, or after the planning commission with the Attorney's General, Attorney's General's Office. So using the last updated version, they asked about cow enviro screen and if we could include the Tully Tribe, Tullyville and Terabella as considered environmental justice communities, even though they didn't score right under the cow enviro screen. And we agreed to do that, and those have been included in the environmental justice element. Regarding air quality analysis, water quality and pesticides, an explanation of those processes as far as the regulations around those concerns are in this final version and how those are addressed by the differing agencies. Reduce pollution exposure, the county has adopted policies specific to dairies. There was a question also by Leadership Council regarding dairies and air quality. By utilizing the Animal Confinement Facilities Plan Program from 2017 on, the ACFP for the dairies, the CAP Amendment, the county has been able to reduce GHG emissions, and I'll get into this a little bit more so, but up to 19%. Tulare County Annual Report of Dairy and Feedlot, GHG's emissions from, in 2021, looks at the populations of dairy heifers. And although they increased relative to 2013, they decreased relative to 2020. And some of the other concerns were in regards to sigma and well mitigation, and flooding has caused several dairies to close. So these are other things that will reduce the overall cow count in the county, but overall GHGs have been reduced dramatically, and I have some other numbers I'm going to talk to in a second here. The table shows that from 2013 to 2021, the total CO2e equivalent emissions have been reduced by 19%. So that program has been successful, and the county's policies will help to reduce GHGs and other pollution in the future. So in summary of our efforts from 2020 to 2023, we'd had public meetings, stakeholder meetings, we used Civic Spark Leadership Program Projects. The Civic Sparks Fellows were part of this program from the very beginning, Americor, the best and the brightest of the students as suggested by the Department of Housing Community Development that we utilized them for this project. We've used OPR Guidelines and cow enviro screen for research and data analysis. We've had a volunteer engagement program and projects, obviously met with community members, had many stakeholder meetings and looked overall at the county functions. Again, stakeholder meetings over the last four years. Accumulating months of research and feedback, we created a website, a background report, a General Plan Internal Consistency Review and new policies. Each one of these things, not necessarily the website, but the background report, the internal consistency review and the new policies were one year each as far as some stakeholder So I addressed the Attorney General comments. I thought we might get a few more before the hearing today. We did not. We did get comments from Leadership Council, which you all received last night along with me. I'd like to address those directly unless you want to hear from them first and me address last. I'll kind of leave it up to go ahead. All right, so the Leadership Council has been part of this process for four years with differing members that entire time. The only thing that's consistent in this program for the last four years is myself. And I'm here before you to tell you that the policies, and we agreed that it's not necessarily that every policy was going to get into the environmental justice final policies, but that we would consider them along the way. The kind of last minute policies we got from Leadership Council, kind of on their, on their face, we believe are untenable policies. I mean, they are overly burdensome regulatory policies that go farther than any of our other policies in our general plan do go as we sit here today. So we believe they would be injurious to the economy of Tulare County and would affect the people of Metheny Track, Tullyville and Pixley if they were to be approved in the state they're in. The staff has addressed all the comments, but unfortunately, and they stated in there that we haven't, I can show you each one of the changes made that addressed each one of the comments in the document, they say, it just doesn't go far enough. But unfortunately, it's not in the style leadership would prefer as a wholesale approval of those overly burdensome policies. The environmental justice element attempts to take a balanced approach. They, they claim that it stated that it's a, it would be an unapprovable document. The rest of the sentence said, "We are taking a balanced approach for both the community concerns and the general plan policies of the county, especially after discussing this element with those who have been..." The people who signed that document, we've been discussing for, for years, the ones who signed the document from last night, years. And it's a little disingenuous at the last minute to come forward, even as we were leaving the last few meetings for the stakeholders for this, there was a commitment to move forward with these policies. So it seems to staff a little disingenuous. So to go through some of their points, point by point here, as the project has advanced over the course of four years, we have added communities, as just stated, per leadership suggestion that may or may not fit in the model for the environmental elements evaluation criteria under the cow enviro screen. So even if the Terabella didn't quite fit, we've included them. The last ask they asked is for Early Mart. Now, environmental, the enviro screen has changed over the years, and whether it fit in in 2016 or if it's in 2023, to us, we couldn't include that. But it's a far cry from as they state, failing, failing to incorporate the right communities. We've kind of gone along with what they've said so far, so I don't see how that fails. The antennas, the whole point about the pollution burden for water and air quality, they mentioned the state's tracking system of water quality for wells. You know, we regulate less than 0.5% of them. We do encourage, as you'll hear later on today, we do encourage, we try to help in as many ways as we can, putting in new wells. And a lot of these questions that we know are going to be answered through sigma. And SEQA, the SEQA process in and of itself guarantees that we are encouraging and examining and promoting and find feasible ways in regards to pollution exposure to mitigate that. As discussed, we have attempted and continue to strive to help each of the communities to improve water quality and quantity in this county. The board members themselves are members of JPAs. I myself sit on two technical advisory committees. We're out there constantly trying to improve on water quality and quantity. Air pollution, the county through the Air Pollution Control District, the Ad Commissioner's Office and the Department of Toxic Substances Controls regulate the air quality through SEQA and pesticide and fertilizer application regulations. The consideration of buffer zones would be a first step in the land use controls over private property and regulating the use of potential pollutants. Again, this is examination. This is not a straight, "We shall tomorrow do these things." So they're saying we're not going far enough. They say they want those things in place tomorrow. So last point is using cow enviro screen shows that there has been a reduction in air quality pollution, 3.6, they brought up Pixley, 3.6% overall in Pixley. If you download the data, you'll see a 3.6% reduction. Again, through our ACFP, there's also a 19% reduction for the Climate Action Plan Report associated with the CAP. That completes staff's report if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. And do any members of the board have questions for staff at this time? Okay, I don't see any. So at this time, we'll take public testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, and if so, you will have three minutes. And do we have comment cards already submitted?
Yes, Chair, we do have a couple.
Okay. We'll take those first and then go to anyone else.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. And you could pull that microphone right down in, in front of you there. Perfect.
My name is Mary Hightower, and I'm part of the Leadership Council for Metheny Track. And I want, I really would like to know how many people in here know where Metheny Track Maybe about half. That was interesting because, okay, I heard Metheny Track mission appear once or twice and also a group of cities where they're being helped and there's a plan to get fit in on this environmental justice. So I would love, we would love as a council, as a leadership council of Metheny Track to be part of that planning with these other small cities around. My particular area here that I'm working on is that truck, that the, that the two trucking industries are being built adjacent to Metheny Track community, one at the north and the other at the southeast part of the community. These will be 24/7 operating businesses that include noises, truck emissions, traffic and safety risks are up, and also health risks from the emissions and things that are around there. My question is, my question is, how many one of the, how many one of the supervisors considered the negative impact on the community by these projects? If so, have you been working with a design to have special routing for the trucks that really just come down the street and directly impact the neighborhood? And this special routing would be able possibly to avoid the negative impact of the trucking systems and industries that's being built right now as we speak? And thank you for listening.
Thank you. We have another comment card?
We have about four more.
Okay, great.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here representing Metheny's Tracks, the residents that are out there in Metheny's Tracks. And I've said before, I don't know if I said it to you, but I'm one of the originals, 75 years in the tracks. And if you all have heard the story, we've been in the newspapers, so you heard about Metheny's Tracks and why there is a Metheny's Tracks. I'm concerned about the green space between our backyard and the, the storage place that's been placed there right at the back of our fence, our backyard. We need a green space. Everybody knows what a green space is because of the pollution, trucks coming and going, train is going to be coming off railroad tracks to supply the storage place, which is humongous. So we really need that because of the pollution that we're going to suffer. And we've dealt with pollution for years because we live out there in farming area. We see the plane that comes down and spray. So we've dealt with that pollution. We really hate that there's going to be more impact upon us. So we're hoping that something will be done. I really feel like we need to get a green space, especially behind that storage bed. And I want to see trees, I want to see grass and I want to see bushes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ashley Vega. I'm the Tulare County Policy Advocate with the Leadership Council. First off, thank you to staff and to Supervisor Macari for meeting with us regarding this issue. The county's historical land use practices have resulted in over 35 disadvantaged communities that bear the brunt of pollution burdens from sources such as pesticides, agricultural operations, food processing, dairies, industry and transportation, all while experiencing a lack of investment needed to build healthy communities. Under SB 1000 jurisdictions are required to identify disadvantaged communities and object, oh, and adopt objectives and policies to reduce their unique or compounded health risks by reducing pollution burden, improving air quality, promoting public facilities, food access, safe sanitary homes and physical activity. The EJ element is inadequate due to its failure to address unique pollution burden and environmental justice issues in disadvantaged communities that have disproportionately impacted for years. We also see that there's failure to include policies addressing dairies, pesticide, water contamination and industrial land uses. The policies that are included would not result in meaningful action as they use unbinding language lacking implementation measures or policies and limit actions to feasibility. We urge the county to develop policies that will result in reduction of pollution, prevention of exposure and improve air quality and comply with the full provisions of SB 1000 to ensure the overall health of disadvantaged communities that have been disproportionately impacted for years. We also urge the county to continuously engage and work alongside disadvantaged community residents in the development and implementation of policies that address their unique and compounded health risks. We urge the county to use its authority to prevent further environmental justice burdens and exposure to the community and fully comply with SB 1000. The county, the county's EJ element must take initiative. While the, while the county may not regulate all water systems, the county does have land use authority of sources of water contamination, which can prevent further pollution burden. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Emma Dela Rosa, Regional Policy Manager with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I'm providing comment on behalf of two residents from Pixley who were unable to come today. The first comment is from Josefa. The first comment is from Josefa from Pixley. We are burdened by the, by the use of pesticides. In Pixley, we have seen aerial application of pesticides while we're working or early in the morning while we are dropping off the kids at school. All we can see is the spraying and the smell and the odors from pesticides, or see a yellow spraying that's coming down. We are told that pesticide spraying has changed to the night, but even in the morning, again, when we're out, we're, we can smell it and we can see it. We are also burdened by the, by the number of dairies surrounding our community. Summer nights is not the same. When we go outside and we have barbecues or we invite family over, while, while they're actually eating, they're making faces because of how bad the odor is from the dairies. Our quality of life has, has been impacted because of the dairies. It almost seems like every time we take a bite of our food, we are taking a bite of manure. We cannot invite family over to enjoy a nice barbecue. People don't want to come over because of the odors. Why, and we've, we've actually heard comments that if we don't like it here, then we can just leave. But we can't leave. Maybe it's easy for you to say because you have the money, but for us, it is not easy. We don't have the funds to just get up and leave. That's why we ask that the county regulate dairies and limit the number of cows, because at this point, there are more cows than people. Moving on to Maria Revolos' comment from Pixley. I have lived in the community for many years, and when we arrived, conditions were nice. But with the number of dairies, our community has been impacted by the number of respiratory illnesses. As a person of Catholic faith, I have gone to many folks' funerals and I have prayed. And every time I ask how this person passed away, it tends to be because of a respiratory illness. And that's why I'm here to ask that you please protect our communities and regulate dairies. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last card we have is Javier Medina.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Javier Medina. Vengo de la comunidad de Martinez Truck in Tularia, California.
Good morning. My name is Javier Medina, and I come from the Matheny community, Matheny Track community.
Y aquí estoy para este apoyar a nuestra comunidad y quisiera que ustedes nos apoyaran para reducir la contaminación de el medio ambiente, de las avionetas que a veces humigan y a veces están fuertes los químicos alrededor de nuestra área. Quisiera que lo reducieran a lo más que se pueda, así como químicos, como el medio ambiente también.
I'm here in support of my community, and I'm here to ask for you to support us as well, especially when it comes to the aerial application of pesticides and all of the other pollutants in our environment.
Y también quisiera que este como ahí se está, se puso una, una fábrica que va a traer muchos troques entrando y saliendo, y también eso va a ser bastante contaminación. Entonces, me gustaría que en nuestra área, este, si pudieran corregir algo de sus borradores que tienen ustedes para mejorar nuestra comunidad, como poniendo tiendas o algo bonito, parques o algo bonito, porque también para qué lado estaría bonito si pusieran casas en vez de rodearnos de fábricas.
Around our community, there's going to be an industrial development, which is going to bring in a lot of contamination to our community. And we ask that you may, that you take a look at your drafts, at your EJ element, and consider making changes in order, in order to protect us. We would also like to see stores or housing developments come into our community. You know, the community can also, is also deserving of that instead of being surrounded by industrial land uses.
Y también a ver si nos pueden este apoyar para mejorar nuestras calles, poner banquetas, luces en nuestra comunidad que nos hacen falta.
We'd also like to see improvements in our sidewalks and our streets and some streetlights, which is something we don't have.
Y gracias por su apoyo.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
That was the last public comment card that we received.
Okay, those were all the public comment cards. Is there anyone else in the chambers wishing to provide a public comment on this matter? Yes, come on forward. Good morning.
My name is Enaro Salas, and I'm from Martinez Truck. And I've been living there for the last six years. My wife been there for forty-some years. And when I got there, I see how the street looks, houses, no light, nowhere to go play, have fun. And, and the raining comes, we all get flooded, and we are poor people. And, and we pay taxes every year. And we would like for the board supervisors to consider and try to help us because we really need help. You know, we can do many things because we don't have no money, no way, you know, how to do things. And we will, I would like for the board supervisors to, to help us somehow to, to better our little town, Martinez Truck, so it looks better, better streets, lights. Once it gets dark, we all going inside the house because we can't be out there, you know. Like a lot of times, you, at nighttime, when you get home and, and you relax, you eat dinner, whatever, and you say, I might go for a walk. But not there, there's no way, you know, because everything is dark, whoever's out there in the street, you never know, you know, what they up to, you know. So we would like for Martinez Truck, we would like to better the little town and, and better the streets lighting, like we all asking for that because we really need it. We can do it, you know. We need help. And I'm a pastor in one of the church, and I bought the property with my retirement to save souls. And what I see is a lot of people don't want to come, and, and some of them, they don't want to, you know, come to the church, or, or some of them, they know we're there, but in the nighttime, nobody wants to be out there, you know, in the nighttime because everything's dark. I don't want to be out there, but if I had to, I'd go. But, you know, help us to, to better ourselves and a better way to walk because in the nighttime, it's, it's hard, you know. You could break your leg walking, you know, because it's a puddle in the, in the, in the floor, in the ground. So I would like for the board supervisors consider that and help us to better ourselves and better our little town. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak? Okay, I see a couple coming. Good morning, Fred.
Good morning. Fred Beltran from Terabella. I just want to thank you all for being here and listening to us. On behalf of the Terabella Group, which we've organized a, a group over there to help, we've got a couple of pilot projects going on with air quality and ag spraying. And we've had other issues in the last year, where housing's a problem. There, there's so many things that are an issue in, in these small communities. And anything you can do to help these small communities, I'm, I'm not sure what it would, what it took not to get in this list, but I would appreciate that, that Terabella be included as part of this group. Because like I said, we've already got started, the several, DuCor, Terabella, Strathmore, Alpa, and another school have gotten together to try to work out some funding for resources, resource area for, for these schools because we, that's the only way really we can accomplish some of these things by, by grouping together and trying to leverage some grants and funding for our small communities. But I appreciate us listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias todos. Maricela Mares Alatorre. I'm a Community Solutions Advocate with Community Water Center. And I work out of Isilia. Most of my work concentrates around the community of East Arosi, Cutler, and Arosi, but I'm here to support these residents of Matheny Track. I find it really commendable, the way you went out of your way to look for public participation. That's so important in public process. Unfortunately, a lot of the times, you get this wonderful public participation now, but you, the decisions are the same. And until decisions change, it doesn't matter how many times you use Calenviron screen to point out that a community is vulnerable. Believe me, they know that they're vulnerable. I come from the community of Kettleman City in, in Kings County, which, you know, is one of the pilot communities for Calenviron screen. But again, as long as the decisions that are made are still impacting vulnerable communities, it doesn't matter how wonderful your use of public participation is. Please listen to the communities and make decisions that will result in a healthy environment for all, and thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others in the audience this morning wishing to address the board on this matter? Okay, I don't see any. Have we received any emails on this item?
Yes, sir. We have received one email, and it's an email with recommendations for the county.
Thank you. Okay, and this is the, the email that we received yesterday, that we each received yesterday. Okay. Just a hard copy of that. Okay, thank you. There being, if there's no more public testimony, I'll close the public testimony portion of the meeting and, or the hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and action. Any board members have questions? Vice Chair Macari.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming and providing your comments and providing your comments and email. And I assure you, we hear you. Sometimes we're limited in funding what we can do, even though people don't understand that. But with that said, I have some questions for staff. I, I heard today that the ladies from Matheny and Mr. Beltran from Terabella said that their communities were not part of this. Is that accurate?
No, no, we, we included Terabella as of the final draft that went to, between the planning commission and the board, and Matheny's been on this list the entire time.
So we, we have had communication with Matheny?
Absolutely.
Okay, no, that's fine. And I may have misunderstood, and to that I apologize. Second of all, I, I know that a lot of the communities in my district are the older communities, they are disadvantaged communities, and I know that sidewalks and streetlights are a, are a high request. I, I've tried to explain to them how a special district has to be formed because the local residents pay for those services. Some of these communities are not designed for sidewalks because of, they were just built flat. Could you explain that for us? So we, so everyone has an understanding. I think understanding is a part of the, the problem.
Right, and I've explained it in many communities myself, as we've updated all the communities throughout the county and presented at all the communities throughout the county. But the, the issue is the financing for streets, new streets, sidewalks, lighting. I think Ivanhoe is actually one of the only communities that has the CSD running their lights. So they are expensive. The county ends up themselves paying for the lights. Southern California Edson and PG&E will actually hook them up. We go through a warrant process because it is a cost to the county to see how necessary they are based on accidents. And so in a lot of instances, because the traffic flow is a little bit lower, you don't hit, or meet warrant to, to require them. We have worked with Matheny Track. Unfortunately, the last TCC grant was not successful with them, where we were asking, you know, for a million dollars for new sewer. But the lighting program would also be some incorporated into something like that as far as grant funding. But if they wanted something right now, they would either need to pay for it themselves instead of how the county do it, and/or go to their local CSD and see if the CSD will incorporate things like sidewalks and lights into their funding programs.
And when you say CSD, you're referring to a community service district?
Community service district.
And if they don't have one, then they would have to form one.
They'd have to form one. That's correct.
All right. So, okay. And we are, and I know this, but I want, like it said, we do do what we can to help us with grants and everything we can to help these communities, correct?
That, that is correct. I myself write many grants. I myself do have done years of outreach. You know, even the SB 2 grants, the LEAP grants, the REAP grads, things, even pay for these documents that are before you today, were all written by myself to, to make sure we do go after these monies. Denise is here, our grants manager. She constantly, constantly, since I've known her and known this board and this county, has looked at every dollar we can to help every community we can. They just come to us, you know. Leadership comes to us, self-help comes to us, and we come before you with the grant applications. So that's, that's a constant in our lives.
And the community block grant that we've had, we just forgave quite a few of those, right?
Yes.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Valero.
Hi, yes, good morning. So I, I have a question for, for staff, and that is, is this a living and breathing document? And that, by saying that, can these change according to community needs in the future? So that even though you're asking us to authorize by action today, we can still use this document that is set before us to make changes in the future, to continue to progress in the issues of the communities that they're asking for of the now? Is, is this kind of where we're at?
Well, as a planner, the general plan's a constitutional document, so living, breathing, subject to change. This is a, to me, I worked in the Environmental Justice Division at OPR 20 years ago, big first step. And it's, to me, these policies themselves are very new to the county. So this is the first step. But moving forward, when we do update the general plan, and I've discussed this with the Attorney General and Leadership Council, when we update the general plan 2030, we'll have updated a lot of elements, but I think absolutely at that time would be a good time to change these. But we do try to review all of our policies every five years and our community plans every five years. So during that timeframe would be the, you know, the, the time in which this would be improved. So those, and if we see something that's necessary to be implemented, we can change even the implementation measures, not just the policy, the goals or anything like that. So like I said, I, I feel like we do a lot of these things already, and this is to the extent we want to actually create regulations out of these policies. So if necessary in the future, it's absolutely changeable.
Yes, and so I just want to share that being in this kind of a position at the county level, again, we're an extension of the state, not separate from. However, there are decisions that are often made at the state level where we're not always in lockstep, in unison, and that sometimes we as a county need to catch up, or need to add, or need to see where we can do better based on the recommendations or the regulations from the state. But I will also share that RMA has worked hard at, at solving some of the issues that we've had in our communities. And I will share, I represent 13 unincorporated communities, and I do see the, the dearth of, of sidewalks and others. But I will share that just a few years ago, the county also made a huge step in providing a sidewalk curb and gutter grant, or an opportunity to pay most of- a sidewalk curb and gutter grant or an opportunity to pay most of some of the projects that if residents are concerned about a sidewalk here or there or even in front of their own home, that they've also made that option available. Nonetheless, again, I, it's hard, and we hear you, we see you, we understand the frustrations, but knowing that we are doing our due diligence, we are trying to raise the bar as we can. And so I personally see this as just the beginning, as yes, we have this in front of us, that we're taking an action today, but know that this is, as going back to what Aaron just said, a living and breathing document that we will set as a standard, as a gold standard for us to move forward to in the future.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions from the board? Yes, Supervisor Vanderpool.
Yeah, I would just make a comment. Thank you for bringing this item, Aaron. You know, I really wish that we were able to highlight all of the work that the county has done over the years to invest in communities, to bring various amenities, projects, safe routes to school, ATP, all of the different avenues we've utilized to bring in infrastructure projects, to come in and bring infrastructure that was not done when these communities were built, but is needed after the fact. We've done a lot of work. We've done a lot of heavy lifting, and I do think that that needs to be commended as well. And we are looking at the safety of residents that live in our unincorporated communities and want to make sure that they have safe access to walk to, say, school or to in and about the community. Streetlights, additional sidewalks, you know, those are all projects that, you know, are on a definite needs list that we will continue to apply for grants for. But, you know, if you could just maybe highlight some of the sidewalk projects that we've done, even just this last year. There are so many communities that have gotten sidewalk projects done because of the work that we have done. And I would say that sidewalks and walkability in a community is absolutely one of the top requests that we get. But we are committed to infrastructure and to taking advantage of any opportunity we can to help make communities better and make our lives for our residents better there as well. So I just wanted to highlight that, and I hope that you can maybe discuss some of those as well. I know you probably don't have an exhaustive list, but even just highlighting some of them would be very helpful.
I'll actually have our RMA director come up.
No pressure.
Public Works Director, too.
Good morning. Reed Chanki with the Resource Management Agency. Just to quickly touch on a couple of projects here. Absolutely right, Supervisor. We've recently completed projects in Pixley, Early Mart. We're working on a big project in Ivanhoe. We've got work in Tipton going on. So we, Alpa, I mean, it's across the county. It's hard to pick a location that hasn't been touched in the last five years or will be in the next five. We take sidewalk projects really seriously, but they're a challenge. They require right-of-way acquisition, they require drainage designs and infrastructure, places to put the water. So we take these very seriously, and we're trying to do what we can, but it is an effort to move that forward. It's not as simple as just calling the concrete guy and putting some flat work out. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Reed. Vice Chairman McCary.
You know, I'd also like to point out that Item 42 today on the consent calendar is an assessment district in the community of Goshen that is just exactly what we're talking about for street maintenance. Item 50 is going to be a presentation from the Resource Management Agency on updates on county water resources. There's a lot being done, and I know that, that's why I say that part of information sharing and collaboration gets that word out. And you have done an amazing job, and we continue with it, and the struggle continues. We've come a long way. And, you know, and I have told people, it's a plan. The word "plan" is not the final document, and we will continue to work on it. So I just want to point out, there's things coming up just on today's agenda alone that are exactly what we're talking about, that'll be addressed. And thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, Supervisor Valero.
So I just wanted to touch on one project specifically that Reed briefly mentioned, and that's the community of Ivanhoe, the sidewalk safe routes to school from the school all the way to the center of the town. And that project has been long in the making, and I would say anywhere between three years already in terms of trying to get from start to finish. And there are some community members that I will just share that would call me up and said, "No, I don't want this sidewalk in front of my, in my home." And it wasn't until there were a group of us, residents and myself, that had to go and talk to some of the residents and explain to them the need, explain to them the purpose and the why of this project. And thankfully, the, some of the resident owners were willing and said, "You know what? To better the community, we will." And so, again, it just, I hear all of the concerns, and it's just making sure that we're putting laser-like focus in these communities, but taking the time again to build that, build that relationship and communicate. And so, again, just, I want to thank everyone for expressing their concerns, but also knowing that the county is doing its work on behalf of the people that we serve. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board? Yeah, and I was going to ask next if we need to have, if the council or any of the members of the board would like to go to closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I do believe there is a need for a closed session.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we will convene briefly as we step into closed session, and we will be back out very shortly. Jason was trying to tell me "close." I couldn't, I couldn't. No, no, it was the next question on the list, was to go to closed.
Okay, I think we have everybody back in the room, so we'll go ahead and come back to order. And so, one last time, board members, any more questions? If not, I will bring it back for entertaining a motion. So we have a motion for approval of the element by Chair McCary, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool. We can cast our votes. And item number four is approved unanimously. And the public hearing is now closed. Next, we'll take up agenda item number five, a public hearing to consider the adoption of the initial study and negative declaration for general plan amendment number GPA 22-005, the Tulare County 2023 to 2031 housing element update, and SB 244 disadvantaged communities plan. And the public hearing for this item is now open, and we'll start with staff's presentation and take board questions and public testimony. And Mr. Bach, please make your presentation.
Chairman Townsend, Supervisor, CAO, counsel, and clerk. I am Aaron Bach, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. And before you today is the 2023-2031 housing element update. So what is a housing element? Under SB 375, general plans that require that all local jurisdictions must complete one of these every five to eight years. This has been mandated since the California Planning Act of 1971, and it has to be consistent with the regional housing needs assessment plan. As many of you are members of TCAG, you're familiar with that, prepared by TCAG. So as far as how we went through this process, within the planning period, the county has updated, adopted a total of 21 community plans, 11 Hamlet plans, five legacy plans, and most recently, plans have been adopted for Cutler, Rossi, Lemon Cove, Ivanhoe, Woodville, and Plainview, and these are all implementing the 2015 housing element. We've done, we are working on community plans for Springville, Kingsburg, and Delano Urban Development Boundary, all of which are available online. Starting the housing element website, we started that on October of 2022 to provide public information from stakeholder meetings. So yes, we're running stakeholder meetings concurrently with this and the environmental justice element. We start off with community questionnaires, which were made available online and through public meetings. So our housing element advisory committee was started just a month later in November of 2022, which included Self-Help Enterprises, the Building Industry Association, represented by NS Builders, Tulare County Association of Governments, represented by Ben Kimball. Public participants included Habitat for Humanity of Tulare Kings Counties, Central Valley Empowerment Alliance, Centro de Unidad Popular Benito Juarez Incorporated, Housing Authority of Tulare County, and Tulare County Association of Realtors. Others who were invited to participate included the Farm Bureau, Health and Human Services, Task Force on Homelessness, Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, and the Community Service Employee Training CSAT, and the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development. So there was public participation as well. We had overlying workshops, including environmental justice, including hazard mitigation plan. So there's four advisory committee meetings, involvement of eight organizations and agencies. Most of the concerns boiled down to infrastructure as a major constraint to housing. Attended 12 other community engagement events throughout the county. We had over 500 participants. Most of them noted that the affordable housing is a major concern for these communities. They liked the idea of single-family homes, which are more popular near cities, and multifamily housing, which was more popular in the unincorporated communities. So what are the requirements of a housing element? First of all, is the identification and analysis of existing and projected housing needs for all income levels, including special housing needs for elderly persons, persons with disability, farmworkers, et cetera. And these are based on population and employment trends, including overcrowding level of payment housing stock conditions. So that's kind of the background to the housing element as far as the data that is collected. The analysis of governmental and non-governmental constraints to housing development, looking at land use, building codes and enforcement, fees, permit procedures, costs of construction, and prices of land. These are all things we have to look at as well. Assessment of fair housing to affirmatively further fair housing. This is new for this housing element. So this is the integration and segregation patterns throughout the history of the county, looking at racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. These are called RE caps. And affluent disparities in access to opportunities, disproportionate housing needs, and contributing factors. So those are all the things we have to look for nowadays under this fair housing and affirmatively further fair housing content to the government code. Inventory of land suitable and available for housing development, that's pretty much consistent with every other version of the housing elements. State community goals, policies, and development for housing programs scheduled to be implemented over the time horizon of the housing element, and make a diligent effort to include public participation of all economic segments of the community, which so far HCD says we've done a pretty good job at. So what are some of the other requirements? Include a program that affirmatively furthers fair housing and an assessment of fair housing, and this means to take meaningful action, taken together, address significant disparities in housing needs and in access to opportunities, replacing segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living opportunities, transforming racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity, and fostering and maintaining compliance with civil rights and fair housing laws. And in order to do this, provide parcel-specific inventory that provides assessed parcel numbers, whether the site is publicly under leased, available, planned, and accessible infrastructure, the RENA income category the site is anticipated to accommodate, and if the parcel was identified in the previous planning period. So on top of that, site inventory must be prepared using HCD standards, forms, and definitions. So that's what is required for a housing element nowadays. So the housing element is to make a diligent effort to facilitate the development of the given number of units that addresses the housing needs of the unincorporated areas of Tulare. And you could see from this chart, from the housing needs assessment, assessment of fair housing, analysis of housing constraints, we're supposed to come up with site inventories and housing programs and policies. So what was the number that was doled out to us? 9,243. So that's a couple thousand more than last time, but given that we hit about 20%, I think that's probably where with some confidence, we could say we'll continue to do about 200 homes a year, so fall further from meeting the goal. But you can see the county total there is 33,000 units. Department of Finance numbers were given to us, TCAG doles out the numbers. Because we have a larger housing stock than some of these other smaller cities, they gave us the higher number, pretty consistent with what VICELIA got as well, when they got 10,000 units. And then you break the arena of progress by income level. We are pretty good at the lower-income-level housing, meeting those goals. As you get up to above moderate income, we fall further away. But you could see, we built 1,445, or we, there was 1,445 units built compared to the 7,081 units projected by RENA, by TCAG. As far as income categories, again, above moderate, whereas we do pretty well on the lower averages, the above moderate, we don't do as well as far as the building. But if you actually look at, and this is what the state's looking for as far as compliance right here, site inventory. Can we build the units that are projected based on zoning? And we're telling you we could at a ratio of 251,000 to 9. So we zoned a lot of land. The cool thing about our zoning, even if we didn't have mixed-use overlays, is that we are allowed to build residential units on industrial land and on commercial land. So that's why these sites are available for development. We also included the 44 urban development boundaries of the county, and this is one of the limiting factors that the state also considers. We have to have available infrastructure, meaning that it could be available. They're looking to see if there are water lines, not if there's moratoriums, not if there's not water available today, but are the water lines, sewer lines, drainage available? So we do look at the infrastructure feasibility within the communities. So we found out of the 44, UDB 17 have potential water and sewer capacity, 22 have current water and sewer capacity, three have none, and two have planned water and sewer. And according to the housing element, planning is enough. The ones that don't have it, they would discount any of the sites we had as far as our inventory as being available. And that was prepared by Provence and Pritchard just March of this year. Action Program 9 is where this information resides, but Action Program 9 also talks about other aspects. Action programs are action programs to the housing element, and basically what's that saying is that there is some sort of deficiency in HCD's eyes, and we need a program to fix it. Obviously, infrastructure is one of those. And so, Action Program 9 says that we'll continue to update and maintain the matrix of infrastructure development priorities for disadvantaged unincorporated communities. In the housing element, there is a metric of all the needs of all the different communities in the county, and a feasibility study to what they would need to do to update that, to get to a point where that all the infrastructure was available. Seek grant funding from the state in Program 9.9 is to continue to seek grant funding from the state, federal, and other sources for water-related infrastructure and planning projects to support provisions of water and sewer services to new housing developments. So again, we understand the deficiencies, and the solution is, as we discussed before, is to continue to seek grant funding, which is a sufficient method according to HCD. So a total of 46 housing programs were described in the housing element. 13 program areas, action programs, as I was saying, if there's a deficiency, the action programs resolve that for HCD, including coordination of housing programs, encourage fair housing practices, farmworker housing, open exchange of ideas and information, streamlining, sustainable practices, et cetera. So we have these programs, and so far, HCD has been satisfied with what we've put in there as far as policies and objectives. Fair housing policies, like I said, this is a new one. So we've put most of our effort in making sure this is right with the HCD. So first of all, you look at where your increased poverty levels are. Right now, it's looking at East Porterville, Goshen, London, Ridge Grove, Springville, Strathmore, and Tipton. So fair housing requires jurisdictions to assess the contributing factors to why we believe poverty increases in these areas. It's really a mapping exercise, looking at different cohorts. So looking at the fair housing enforcement, we look at farmworker housing, higher differences in location based on income, and that's, again, part of the mapping exercise. Substandard housing, lack of affordable opportunities, lack of outreach and/or benefits. So these usually result in what you see down here below, Program 2.1. And as far as how we address some of the fair housing questions the state is asking is really with our program. So the county seeks and assists other agencies and nonprofits in funding for housing, including infrastructure, broadband, and other utilities, and provides bilingual brochures regarding fair housing, and that's our Program 2.1. That's been, so far, HCD said that is sufficient. We have one of the, one other thing that was good for us as far as their approval process is we have one of the best and largest farmworker housing programs in the state. They would like us to entertain a fee deferment until 50% is made available to low-income farmworkers in the farming housing program. I think we could agree to that, but that would come back before the board later. And we haven't seen a huge increase in farmworker housing, but again, we have one of the largest programs in the state. So what's the process? Obviously, this has been reviewed. We've already had our 90-day review with the HCD. We've completed, we've completed those revisions, and then, and we're bringing this back to you for approval. And then after this, it would go out, be notified to the service districts and the public utility districts and other local utility providers, basically telling them what we approved, and then we send it back to HCD for a secondary review and approval for a 60-day review. So CEQA was approved with the initial study negative declaration. And that completes staff's report, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Does the board have any questions for staff at this time? All right. Hearing none at this time, we'll take public testimony on this item. Anyone from the audience who wishes to speak, each person would have three minutes to speak. And first of all, do we have any comment cards?
We do not have any public comment cards.
All right, there's no comment cards. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the board on this matter? Yes, come on forward. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Jose Flores from Self-Help Enterprises in the Real Estate Development Department. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the county and Aaron for letting us be on the committee and, you know, providing comment and input on the housing element. Self-Help Enterprises is very proud to be working 60 years in Tulare County. Thank you to those who also showed up to the office this weekend. And so we are just in support of this, and just mentioning that it's great to be working with a county that is very proactive with affordable housing. And I've seen on my own projects, Neighbor Village, Sequoia Commons, that the county really does put their money where their mouth is and is in support of these projects. And so I'm looking forward to continue working with the county, not just on housing, but other elements mentioned today in regards to the unincorporated communities. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your work in the county and also for your help on the housing element. Any others in the audience wishing to address the board on this matter? Okay, seeing none, do we have any emails received?
No, sir.
Okay, there being no more public testimony then, I'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and bring the matter back to the board for discussion and/or action. Any board members have questions for staff at this time, or wish to take more time, or see the need for closed session? I don't see any on that either, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. We have a motion for approval by Supervisor Valero, seconded by Vice Chair McCary, and if we can cast our votes. And this item passes unanimously. With that, that concludes the agenda item number five. Thank you, and the public hearing is now closed. And that will take us to our consent calendar, which is items number six through 48. I understand that we have a verbal correction on item 32, but just before that, do we have any others that need to be pulled for separate consideration by the board? I don't see any, would any of the public wish to pull any of these items for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none, we'll take the verbal correction on item number 32.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On item 32, the request should read, approve the revised Tulare County Medical Resolution and Revised Drug-Free Workplace Policy, effective January 1, 2024, subject to any necessary meet and confer.
Okay, so just the addition of subject to any meet and confer. Any questions on that change? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I will move approval.
A motion for approval by Supervisor Sheckley and seconded by Supervisor Valero. We'll cast our votes. And the consent calendar is approved unanimously. And that will take us to our untimed items. Item number 49 has been pulled for a future agenda item. Item number 50 is to receive a presentation from the Resource Management Agency that provides updates on the county's water resources efforts. Good morning, it's Denise England.
Well, this has been quite an RMA morning, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Good morning, board, council, clerk, Denise England, and CAO, sorry. Denise England, Grants and Resources Manager with the Resource Management Agency. I'm here to provide a update on all things water in our water program. So I would start off first with the theme of the morning, which is our disadvantaged communities. We've done quite a bit of work over the years in our communities, and this is kind of the highlight reel for this past year. So starting with East Arosi, Tulare County about a year ago was appointed administrator for that water system, and there is a mandatory consolidation of the water system with the Arosi Public Utility District. So staff has been working diligently on getting that accomplished and working through the consolidation project, which includes a new water supply and pipeline, looking at not only the community of East Arosi, but other opportunities to do regional consolidation in that area, because that makes most sense to get all of those that are on an unsafe or inadequate water supply into a community water system. supply into a community water system. In Metheny Tract, several years ago, we accomplished getting a water system installed to replace their formerly mutual water company-owned water system. It was a connection to the city of Tulare. The residents in Metheny Tract are currently water customers of the city of Tulare, and we have been working on a sewer project that will also bring them, replace their failing septic tanks and bring them into the city's wastewater treatment system and plant. We anticipate a funding agreement out of the state for this project in early spring, and so, that project's moving forward. We did submit an application in partnership with Leadership Council to the Transformation Climate Communities through the Strategic Growth Council. We received word last week that that application is not being recommended by Strategic Growth Council staff, so that project will then be on hold until we can identify another funding source, which is very unfortunate. Tulieville has a water consolidation project with the city of Exeter. This one is moving forward in the design phase. It includes a new water supply for Exeter and several miles of piping. The Department of Water Resources also has a direct drought assistance program, and so, they have gone out to the community and identified homes that would allow a swap of a swamp cooler with some other cooling device, reducing the water demand in that community. Unfortunately, they're not going to be able to do as many homes as they would like just because the homes themselves are not set up to power that type of system, but the ones that they can do, they are swapping out and, and looking at other ways to reduce water demand in that community to make sure they have adequate water supply. Yetam and Seville, this is a longstanding water consolidation project. This, we are now in Phase Two, which includes a new water supply well, a new tank, and then the actual physical connection between Yetam and Seville. West Goshen, we received funding assistance from the Department of Water Resources through their Small Community Drought Assistance Program. This is a consolidation with the Cal Water system that exists in that area. Several years ago, the Goshen Mutual Water Company, those customers and residents were able to connect to Cal Water system, and then these homes were all on private wells. So, now we're able to go out and get these homes connected to that larger water system, which provides better water supply and better water quality. Harrison Road and Avenue two sixty-six, this is another consolidation project with Cal Water. We are using both ARPA funding as well as DWR drought assistance funding. This is the neighborhood that's just down from Government Plaza. I can see them out my window every day. There's about twenty-five homes there that are all on private wells. There are several tanks that are receiving hauled water in that neighborhood, and this project's moving forward with groundbreaking early next year. We've also been able to tap into technical assistance through the State Water Board for Self-Help to go out and do some outreach and get the right to entries and the customer sign-up forms and all of that for that community. So, your board also approved about a twelve million dollar investment in disadvantaged community wastewater and water infrastructure, and so, this is a list of those projects. Ivanhoe, and they were allotted six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At the time I put this presentation together a few weeks ago, we had not received an invoice from Ivanhoe, but we have received an invoice from Ivanhoe, so that will be paid. That was for some wastewater improvements at their wastewater treatment plant. Pixley received one point nine million. They've spent just about all of that. That was to do a jack-and-bore for their main water line under Highway ninety-nine and go up, I believe it's Park Avenue. It's what goes along the eastern, or the west, yeah, the eastern edge of Highway ninety-nine. Tipton had three projects, North Burnett Road, well number six, and wastewater plant upgrades. Those projects have gone out to bid and were awaiting construction. So, the, the first number is what was allocated in ARPA. The second number is what's been spent to date. So, we anticipate these, these numbers will increase as they get started into their project. They did have a couple of bidding troubles, as we all have seen. Unfortunately, contractors are pretty busy, and so, getting folks to bid on projects has been a bit of a challenge. Poplar received four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars for a well project. We received word from them last week. They said, if we approve the invoice, can you reimburse us like the next day because we've got to pay our contractor and the check won't clear if we don't get your money? So, we're working with them to get that done. Cutler, this was for their, some, I believe that one is wastewater improvements. And then Arosi was five hundred thousand for backup power at their, one of their well sites. Strathmore, they had a tank repair. And then, we have these others, Cal Water with the Chinewith Fire Hydrant and the Harrison Road Project, which I talked about. And then Early Mart has their sand wall that's been contracted. The other two projects for Early Mart, the Front Street Well and the Sewer Interceptor, were included in the first round of federal earmarks, so we're waiting for that money to come in before we, before the ARPA money can be spent because they have to be done together to make the project complete. So, in two thousand and twenty-one, we submitted the following fiscal year twenty-two earmarks for Early Mart Front Street Well and the Early Mart Interceptor Project. We have provided NEPA documents to EPA. We received a couple of comments back, answered those, and so, we anticipate that funding agreement to finally come probably mid-two thousand and twenty-four. And then, once EPA gets that money out, then they will move on to the next year of earmarks in which we received kiosks. So, these are water fill stations similar to what some of the water quality coalitions have established. So, trying to get a more immediate solution to the communities that are waiting on their long-term solution. And then also, some funding for Woodville, well number four. Last year for fiscal year twenty-four, we've run out of sort of shovel-ready projects, and so, we, we asked for a couple of planning projects, one for a regional wastewater treatment facility for Allensworth and one to update a similar wastewater treatment study for Traver. Those two were not selected in the earmark process, so we'll be evaluating what we submit if, if projects are requested next year. Updates on the drought, because despite our very wet winter, we are still experiencing drought conditions. In Tulare County, there's a total of three hundred and seventy-eight tanks deployed that are receiving hauled water. And then, in March, we transitioned the bottled water program from the county over to Self-Help, so that Self-Help was then the one-stop-shop for drought assistance. And so, they have seventeen hundred households enrolled. Two hundred and seventy-four of those are related to drought. The remainder are from a contamination problem, and then, they're receiving three to four applications per week for drought-related help. Quick look back at well permits issued. So, in two thousand and twenty-two, a total of nine hundred and fifty-seven well permits were issued. Through November of twenty-three, we only had two hundred and eighty-three, and a hundred and twenty-six of those were domestic wells. And so, to the domestic well mitigation program, our groundwater sustainability agencies are working on those programs so that where their minimum thresholds are set, if that impacts private domestic wells, they have a program to replace or repair or somehow mitigate that impacted well. Our GSA managers have been working with us closely to determine, to get a full data set of those private domestic wells. Currently, the county well permitting, we are complying with the Governor's Executive Order for Drought on industrial and commercial and agricultural wells, where the county gets a well permit and then the GSAs have a sign-off on those. We're looking at how we might accomplish that for private domestic wells as well, so that the county's not permitting a future domestic well that is shallower than the minimum threshold and then thereby creating another problem in the future of a dry well. And so, to that end, also, last week, your board approved an application for SB five-five-two drought and water shortage planning funding. You adopted the plan in August. There's some money from Department of Water Resources, and, and the funding, we're really going to try to focus on data mining this, our well data and, and getting a better idea of where the wells are and how they might be impacted by the Sigma minimum thresholds, and then some others, augmenting that plan in some other ways as well. Quick Friant Water Authority update, and I'm going to apologize for this picture because I robbed it from their newsletter and requested the actual picture but never got it. So, it's a little fuzzy, but this is a repair. And this is where the canal is going under one of our, it's a siphon that goes under one of our bridges. And so, the repair is, is for thirty-three miles of the canal. There was a sixty percent loss in design capacity because of subsidence. And so, Phase One is a ten-mile section in kind of the worst part of the subsidence area, and that is nearing completion. So, that will allow the canal to go back up to capacity, which will solve some of the surface water challenges and then hopefully alleviate some of the groundwater challenges as well. Lake Success update. The Lake Success Enlargement Project increased storage from eighty thousand acre-feet to a hundred and ten thousand acre-feet. Phase One was completed in two thousand and twenty-two, and Phase Two is scheduled to be complete in two thousand and twenty-four. And despite having a super-wet winter and being under construction while they were also trying to hold back water, that was, kudos to the Army Corps for that. Quick legislative update, your board took some opposition positions on several bills this last session. Only one was actually chaptered. That was SB three-eight-nine. That was relative to determination of water rights. And then, the Water Commission and the Legislative Committee of the Water Commission watched several bills and then supported a few as well. So, looking forward to the next, the second year of the two-year legislative session, we're looking at a water bond. It's kind of iffy as to whether or not that will go forward. The governor has some other priorities, but there are, we are working with other counties on what that water bond would include and what it should look like and the magic dollar amount as well. And then, another that's of interest to your board is a water consolidation for sewer services. So, currently, the state board has authority to force consolidation for underperforming community water systems. They do not have that same authority on the sewer side. So, we have some examples in Tulare County where communities do not have adequate access to sewer or their sewer systems are failing, and it would be beneficial to consolidate with a nearby system, but there's not that state authority or resources at the state level to do that. So, that's something that we've supported in the past, and I would believe we would support into the future. So, something to look forward to in the next legislative session. And then, quick Sigma update. So, several landowner tools have been developed. The Kuya sub-basin went through a resource conservation investment strategy, or RCIS. This happened from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two. It was a science-based, based on non-binding voluntary conservation strategies, identified which species in that sub-basin would be targeted, and then created options for landowners that were reducing groundwater to comply with Sigma and, and maybe get some, some income in other ways. So, that fed into a multi-benefit land repurposing program for both the Kuya sub-basin and the Tulie sub-basin. Both are three-year programs, ten million dollars. The Kuyas is based on the RCIS effort. The Tulie is kind of going through a similar, but more condensed process to identify which species and what, what different conservation strategies they'll be funding. We also have a sustainable ag lands conservation program, which is the flip side to the multi-benefit land repurposing program. This is in the Eastern Tulie GSA. It's a half million dollars, and it's through March of twenty-six. We've hired a land IQ and the Tulie Basin Land Trust to do stakeholder outreach and then also the data review and, and evaluation. And we had a kickoff meeting last week, so that, that program is underway. And so, the first, the first work is to put together sort of a prioritization, prioritization matrix as to, to identify which lands would be most suited to enter into one of these conservation And then, I end on a sad note. Two of our sub-basins are facing a probationary hearing, the Kuya sub-basin and the Tulie sub-basin. So, these are slides that I stole from the state board back in June. So, the schedules have shifted a bit. So, these are all, these are the top six. So, you'll see number three is Kuya, and number five is Tulie. The state board decided that Tulare Lake, then Tulie, then Kuya would be the order in which they would pursue probationary status, and that was because of declining water levels. And you'll see that the state board is focusing pretty heavily on the drinking water nexus, so the wells and then also the subsidence. So, this was the proposed schedule back in June. This has now shifted. So, Tulare Lake was supposed to go this month. However, they're now looking at April for the Tulare Lake hearings, which then would shift Tulie to probably June, and then Kuya maybe July or August. And so, this was, obviously, this schedule does not apply anymore, but you can kind of see the, what was supposed to take place between when they released the deficiencies until they held the hearing. So, this will be the same. There'll be a public comment period. We've encouraged the state board to really work with the GSAs. I think initially, when they proposed this schedule and their, and their process, they were sort of looking to operate solo, and we've encouraged them to work with the local agencies that have worked so hard to develop those relationships and the trust with their landowners to get Sigma underway. So, right now, the GSAs are addressing planned deficiencies. They continue to implement their plans, and they are expected to exercise their GSA's authorities as needed. And then, the question still remains of how to exit state intervention. So, if our sub-basins go into probationary status in, say, June or August of twenty-four, there's a year-long process by which the state board would develop rules for that sub-basin, and we are sort of under the assumption that they would go directly to sustainable yield and require all groundwater-only parcels to only pump their sustainable yield and only use their sustainable yield, which then means the twenty-year planning horizon became like a one-year planning horizon. So, instead of twenty forty at sustainable yield, we would be probably in twenty-five or twenty-six at sustainable yield, which has significant impacts on our vibrant agricultural economy. And then, the question is, how do we get out of state intervention? So, the state has said you have to revise the plans, you have to hold technical meetings. The state board staff is going to review. There'll be some sort of coordination with DWR, and then there's a state board decision of whether or not the deficiencies are addressed. And so, this is quite concerning because it puts a lot of power into the state board's hands and not a lot of local control. So, not great news. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thanks, Denise. Do we have any questions or comments? Yeah, Supervisor Vanderpool.
Yeah, I'll just say thank you, thank you, Denise, for this report and for all the work that you're doing in the world of water. It's very complex, and as GSAs continue to navigate the web of new regulation, it's, we're seeing, I serve on the Greater Kuya, and it's a, it's a very challenging dynamic. And I, and I think that once, you hit it right on the head when you said the importance of drinking water, because once we really start getting into the well mitigation, planning, and, and having funds available to mitigate dry wells, I think that that's going to change the way that the GSA and the water board is looking at the plans. So, you know, I appreciate all the work you're doing for infrastructure, for water throughout the county. I think we've made great strides. We have work to do, of course, but once we get a lot of these ARPA projects out to construction, I think we're going to see some very positive results. So, thanks for all that you're doing.
Supervisor Vanderpool. I'm sorry, Supervisor Valero. Vanderpool went.
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much for your wealth of knowledge, for navigating the state and the federal, for the county, and always being on the front lines of water issues in our area. I know that not only do I speak for the county, but for communities that look to you as their guide, to look to you as their resource as well. So, again, just, I want to just extend a huge So again, just, I want to just extend a huge kudos to the work that you do and always keeping us updated, always keeping us in the know, also just being up to date on everything that is state, federal, and local. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much, Denise, for the presentation. And I know you had to end on a little bit of a sad note, but besides, that really flowed. Get it? Hey, and thank you. This is the last one of the year that fit under the Building the Future theme that I identified at the beginning. So leaned heavily on RMA. Thank you, RMA, for all the reports on the infrastructure updates that are going on and appropriate that we end with this one on water. All right. Thank you. All right, so next we will go to item number 51, request from the Board of Supervisor Staff to select a display design from the following options, A, B, and C, presented for the permanent prominent display of the United States National Motto in the Tulare County Board of Supervisors Chamber and in the amount not to exceed $700. Good morning. It's still morning.
Good morning, Chairman Townsend, Vice Chairman McCary, members of the board, CAO Britt and Council Flores. This item comes back to you as a result of a motion made and approved by your board on the November 28th Board of Supervisors meeting to select a display design from the proofs presented for the permanent prominent display of the United States National Motto, plural, in the Tulare County Board of Supervisors chambers at a cost not to exceed $700. I believe the clerks have a handout for you to display the proofs. I do have a verbal correction on option A. Option A should read, beginning with "In God We Trust", "In God We Trust" with a 32.5-inch wide, four-inch, gold-colored, unbacked, brushed plastic e pluribus unum. All options are going to be gold-colored. On July 30th, 1956, Section 302, Title 36, was added to United States Code to codify the phrase "In God We Trust" as a national motto. "In God We Trust" has subsequently been reaffirmed as a national motto twice since its adoption. Twelve counties and 132 cities in California currently display the national motto in their board/council chambers, including three cities here in Tulare County. Similarly, the phrase "e pluribus unum" has served as the de facto motto of the United States since its approval for use in the national seal in 1782. As previously stated, both mottos have a history of being used by our nation to represent our nation, "In God We Trust", both as an unofficial motto, beginning in 1864, and its official motto. And its designation as the official motto in 1956, I believe. 1956. And "In God We Trust" since its adoption for use in the national seal since 1782. I also have a display here for the viewing public. I don't know if I can. There we go. And as requested, a visual representation of what the gold color will look on the dark wood background. So each letter will be cut out of a solid piece of this gold plastic here. And for your people, that's how it will contrast with the dark wood background.
You stole that from my office.
I did steal that from your office.
It's got my name on it.
So the selection before you today is the font of the e pluribus unum. Option A is that black ladder font. That's the one that's immediately underneath "In God We Trust", directly above the 32.5-inch arrows there. The second option is actually option C in monotype Crosovia font. And the one at the bottom there is option B in Papyrus font. Any questions?
Any questions for Israel? Supervisor Sheklian.
Sure. Why are we diminishing e pluribus unum by making it smaller? And also, I feel like we need to have, I don't know if you got my email, that the meaning of e pluribus unum, because what it seems to me is it's saying, I don't want folks to think that e pluribus unum translates to "In God We Trust". So I don't know if we could make that e pluribus unum, you know, the same size or maybe slightly smaller than "In God We Trust", and then under that add "Out of Many One", the definition of e pluribus unum?
Sure. To answer your question.
That would be my suggestion or addition or amendment.
So to give you the thought process, the space up here would not allow for both of these phrases to fit within the top section. And the size difference indicates a pain difference towards the codified national motto versus the de facto national motto. And as both models have a long history of use in the United States, they are, by their usage, synonymous with the United States and fairly well-known. The addition of a translation visually would sort of create a lot of verbiage up there that may not be necessary. So that was the thought process. Of course, you're within your right to make a suggestion to the board and a motion to include that.
I think also, just in talking about that, is that there's a little bit of an invitation where that, we can see it on this side too, behind the TV, where there's an invitation where the "In God We Trust" would sit, and the county seal would sit back in there, and the e pluribus unum would be on the bottom a little closer, a little further out. So you'd get a little bit more prominence that way as well. Any other questions, comments for Israel this time? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any public comment on this item? Or have we received any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, hearing none. Then I'm going to bring it back to the board for action.
I would like to make a motion. As far as the lettering of e pluribus unum, I can't remember what the one in the middle, the second one down, is that B?
The one in the middle is option C, which is monotype Crosovia font.
I think it's clear, but I would also like to move that we enlarge it and add underneath it in smaller letters, "Out of Many One", so that we can educate our constituents what this means, since it was included in original, when our country was founded.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Sheklian to approve "In God We Trust" with e pluribus unum, option C, which is the middle one on our representation, and a translation of e pluribus unum. Do we have a second? Hearing none, the motion will die for lack of a second. I'll make a motion. I really do like option A, just because it has that period feel of the 1700s, the handwritten period, and it looks a little bit more artistic in my mind. I do like the size balance right now and the way that it will sit on the front of the wall separating the well. So I would make a motion that we would approve it as is with the font number A, or the font type A, the black ladder, for the e pluribus unum without a translation. Do I have a second? Oh, sorry. I didn't do it on the... Okay, I have a motion by myself, seconded by Vice Chair McCary. Any other discussion? Go ahead and cast our vote. And the item is approved four to one, with Supervisor Sheklian being the no vote. Thank you all very much for that. We'll go on to our board matter request. Does any of the board members have an item they'd wish to refer to staff for a future meeting? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll move on and ask, Madam Counsel, do we have a need for closed session today?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is need for closed session. Item A was already heard. Items B and C are off calendar, and the balance of the agenda will be heard. And I do anticipate an announcement out.
Thank you, Madam Counsel. And since there'll be an announcement out, we will adjourn the meeting at the end of the announcement. Thank you all for coming. And unless you're coming back for an item, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And unless you're coming back for an item, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, we're back from closed session and we're going to have an announcement out by our county council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jennifer Flores, County Council announcing out for item E. The Board of Supervisors directed legal counsel to defend and authorize the defense of individually named defendants, including those to be named later with a reservation of rights in the case of A.G. et al. versus County of Tulare et al., United States District Court, Eastern District of California, The adverse parties are A.G. and F.G. as minors by and through their guardian ad litem, Johanna Yolanda Galvan individually and as successors in interest to decedent Francisco Ponce Jr. This case involves allegations of violation of civil rights, negligence, and related manel claims. The vote to defend was made upon motion by Supervisor Larry Macari, seconded by Supervisor Amy Shuklian. The motion passed unanimously. This concludes today's report out.
Thank you, Madam Council, and with that, we will adjourn this December 12th meeting, the last meeting of the year, and Merry Christmas to everyone.